And get started.
And just so you know, Mike, the preliminary plat for priority to you has been pulled, so we will not be discussing that tonight.
Okay, cool, thank you. Uh, let's get started. I'll catch my breath, too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, first item, consider the March third Planning Commission meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at those?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the long written minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, discuss the comp plan RFPs. Is that you, Justin?
That's gonna be Rebecca this time.
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you guys a quick update. There's a little edit to the memo, it's not quite accurate. Type it needs off pretty quickly, obviously, at the end of last week. So as you remember, May of last year, you completed your multi-month in-depth review of your original or older comprehensive plan that we're currently operating under the Re-Newton Plan. It was determined during that review was really probably time for an update. So looking into 2025, the request for proposal was created. And we went ahead and put that out on February fourth. The proposals were due back on April first. And you can tell that is not quite accurate. Seven were submitted to the Planning and Zoning Administrator. The committee then got together on Friday to review those proposals. And is still in the midst of reviewing them. So no decision has been made. We're still working on through those meetings. If you remember, two meetings were required of the selection committee, which is two members of this board, Commissioner Goodnight and Planning Commissioner Carl Harris, and the mayor is serving as the other elected non-staff person on this committee. But we will probably need a couple more to continue to proceed in that process. So just a quick update since the RFP date had gone by.
When do you anticipate? What do you think the timing's gonna be?
I think we're probably gonna need through the end of the month to come up with some good items.
Cool. Awesome. Any questions for staff?
Will there be a consultant hired?
Yes, the RFPs, sorry, I should've been more clear on that. Those are for consultant firms.
Okay, I thought that's what it was worth.
Sorry, wanted to make sure.
Well, that's great getting seven. That's quite a few. Bet you guys are having fun reviewing all this. Any other questions? Cool, thanks for the update. Uh, we go to the next item, zoning text amendment. Discuss the text amendment for the zoning code concerning Article Three. Uh, this is what we asked at the last meeting for staff to bring back to us to consider for the sidewall requirements for accessory buildings.
Yeah.
You wanna go ahead and?
And this is more of a discussion and then to be tabled to come back after we get, gather more information from you guys. PEC, Mike and his team put together this little spreadsheet for us. And this is something we talked about last time, how we really don't match anybody that surrounds us. So we're looking for your input on if there's a certain municipality or government agency that you guys like or have seen or wanna move towards. We're here to listen. I'm kinda looking for your input at this time.
Um, should we get public comment first before we discuss?
We can. That's up to you guys, Unit 1000.
You guys good with getting public comment if anyone's here to talk about this? Well, I'll open a public hearing, state your name and address.
Casey Nitzel, one hundred Mockingbird Lane, Newton, Kansas. I was here last week and probably a majority of the writing that she had to do, so I apologize for that, but I appreciate you guys' ears. Basically, the sidewalls, I mean, as I've seen in the, in the surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding cities, they're way higher than the city of Newton. So with that being said, I mean, this helps me in my case, so I would appreciate a, at least a entertainment of raising the site and getting me to the point to where I can finish completing my building, because I've been on pause for three years waiting for this to, to go through, so. You know, that, that's, I wasn't really prepared to talk. I was just really prepared to come listen and see what happens.
Yeah, appreciate your comments, so, yeah.
Okay, if you guys have anything else, please call it back up.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, general discussion. Yeah, so, uh, previous to the past meeting, I'd looked at, I'd had one of my guys look at the requirements for other cities that are listed in that table. One thing I know we've talked about, the last, I, I've been part of two of these discussions that I remember. You know, when I was thinking about both of them, I was thinking more of the total height requirement, not the sidewall requirement. And going along the list of those cities, that's pretty much what they did, too. They, they weren't considering sidewall, they were considering total height. And we do have some different options for the different cities. I just wondered what everyone's thoughts were about those requirements.
Well, they're clearly higher than ours.
Yeah.
We do seem to be the outlier in that list.
On an engineering standpoint, is it sixty percent just so it looks like a decent pitch and it looks that way, flat top, flat top type buildings?
It would be the sixty percent of your principal structure.
Right, so I mean, was that just for the look of a pitch? Okay.
Yeah, so, one of the things I think that the, the other cities were trying to get around was they didn't want the structure high, for sure, higher than the, the primary structure. And the appearance of that, I don't know if you've ever seen it, but it does appear when you have that, your accessory structure higher than your building, it doesn't look right to me. And I think that's what we're trying to protect against.
Sure.
So I wanna make sure that I'm reading like Wichita's right. So that means sixty percent of whatever, of whatever the, the highest height of the principal structure is, the, the exterior building could only be sixty percent of that?
Correct.
Up to twenty-one feet?
Correct. Twenty-one foots a max.
Yeah.
But you do have the-
Time to think if I believe that or not, because I've, I mean, I saw a lot of houses in Wichita that have secondary structures.
Well, this would be-
And I can't believe if you've got a, I mean, a red shawl house that has fourteen foot,
Go ahead.
Fourteen foot high, sixty percent of that, let's go fifteen, so sixty percent of that would be that that structure is only nine, nine foot tall. I don't believe that.
The walls?
No, it's saying that the center of the, of the exterior building would only be nine foot tall.
At the peak is twenty-one. In a same, single-family district.
Hmm, I see.
And I'm not sure when these were adopted by the different cities, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There might've been some under previous requirements, I'm not sure when all these-
Could be, because it would have to be. I mean, I, I mean, I can't even hardly believe they would be doing that today, because literally you could have a, today you could have a, I mean, they fifteen foot height through your house, which means the exterior structure could only be nine. You'd no pitch on that garage at all.
Your house-
Just saying, I don't, I guess what I'm saying is I don't like the sixty percent. I guess, maybe that's what I'm trying to say, is I don't like that at all.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I mean, we're here to discuss it and-
Yeah.
Think about these things.
I think, I think we come up with a high, a highest height, as long as it's not higher than the structure.
Isn't that what they did there? I'm missing something here. The principal structure in Wichita's thirty-five foot, as to the peak, sixty percent of that is much more than nine foot.
No, no, we're saying, you're-
But if it, if it, if the height of your structure was thirty-five feet, then the highest, it could go to twenty-one feet.
Yeah.
But if it's only fifteen feet, sixty percent of that is nine feet.
Well, depends on the accessory structure. If it's a storage unit or something like that, nine foot plenty. Like, in his case, a garage or something like that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I've seen a lot of secondary or a lot of two, two-car garages that are, have been built later, you know, and some of those, a lot of those neighborhoods in Wichita.
So if you have a-
They're obviously taller than nine foot.
If you're having a half-in-ground house with some, like, we have some in Newton, you couldn't even put a car in the garage, because you got a house that sticks over nine feet and then you're, that doesn't make sense if we're gonna do that, yeah.
They'd have to-
Exception that out.
Yeah, they'd have to get a waiver on that, or attach it, because this is talking about-
Accessory, yeah.
An accessory building.
I kinda, one of the questions for staff is this, is there any additional research or information we need to, to get down to a decision probably next month at the next month's meeting? Is there anything else we'd like to see?
I'm good with this.
I, I think just coming up with an overall height and-
Do you have the maximum height?
Maximum height and going from there.
Yeah.
Is that, so change the percentage of it and that way you can go higher?
Just-
Cannot exceed height of principal structure?
Up to the height of the principal structure.
So if somebody had a thirty-five foot tall house, you'd, you'd think that a thirty-five foot accessory structure would be acceptable?
That's a good question.
I mean, if you're getting-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, why, maybe use a bigger percentage. And then with the idea of cannot exceed height, like, we'll do this, but also you cannot exceed the height of your other thing, you know, like double, double do.
Yeah, I'm part of, part of this.
Really understood and very clear.
This is all in a, a single-family R1 district, because then we gotta start looking at all the other districts. What do we want to allow and not allow?
And I, if I remember right, the Grosch one, what was the total height of that structure, do you remember? It was twenty-five or some number like that.
Yeah, it was another sixteen foot sidewall as well.
Yeah, sixteen foot sidewall, total height was less than twenty-five, I thought.
Yeah, I think they almost mirrored one another on the two garages, on heights.
Yeah, because the last one was twenty-two feet, right?
Twenty-two and a half, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because I think the, also, to keep in mind, you know, the variances, if we have someone come in and, and request a variance, that's why we're talking about this, because it's almost like we, we don't see our rules being good rules at this point. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned going same height to the structure myself, just saying that, but I think we need to change it, but thirty-five foot-
Hazel goes to forty-five.
Right.
Yeah, we're not Hazel.
I was gonna say, what are we aspiring to be?
But I, it seems like the recent ones, I don't know if we have other examples, but they were under twenty-five foot, you know, so maybe we wanna think about that.
Half, half of the other four go same height as the principal structure.
I don't know.
Now, three-quarters of the other ones go sixty percent.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Sixty percent seems a random number.
That's, but there's three of them that have it, which is interesting.
Why, because they adopted, they adopted Wichita.
Right, they took, they followed Wichita, yeah.
They did, whatever Wichita did.
And we get that comment a lot, while Wichita allows this, everyone mirrors Wichita, so.
Yeah. Was there anything else we want to ask Justin to look at, or?
Did he have something else to say?
I just wanted to point out-
Oh, yeah, come back up if you-
I just wanted to point out, my understanding with you guys with the sixty and twenty-one, there's an asterisk next to it. The sentence down below says unless accessory structure meets all setback requirements for principal structure. So that tells me that as long as he's within his realm, he can go up to twenty-one feet. That's how I take it, just my input.
Correct.
So even if the house is a fourteen foot tall house, he could still go twenty-one, as long as he is within the realm or the setbacks. So to me, that would be within city easements and everything. Just a little insight, my side.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we agree with that.
How tall is your principal structure, do you know? So it's less than thirty-five? Something to think about, too, because the height of his structure would act, if his, is actually less than that thirty-five, he wouldn't be able to even go to that twenty-one, and he's already over that as well, so. Something to ponder.
Yep.
Another reason we're tabling this right now and pushing it, because we, we do have an ongoing court case, so.
Yep.
Do we have to wait for the court case to be solved?
We do. We have, because we've been summoned or whatever as a city.
It was, uh, so, he appealed it again.
Not that I'm aware of, but he still has the thirty days from, I believe, from today.
So we are not allowed to change this in the middle of any of this?
We can, but yet, we're still, he would still be out of compliance even with these, so it doesn't do us a whole lot.
Sorry, that doesn't really help you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you heard if he's appealing it?
My attorney says he hasn't received anything, and then he is telling me of this, so that's why I'm here.
Okay, so, just taking precautionary on our side.
Okay. I think we have a general idea where we're heading here.
Technically, Wichita and Derby are different. Because Wichita, Derby could actually exceed, I don't know what, I don't, I guess I don't, maybe it's missing a, an asterisk?
No, there's a twenty-one, it's a foot symbol on the top twenty-one, but the asterisk, the other one's just a foot symbol, without the asterisk, so they are different.
So there is no asterisk there.
Yeah, there's no asterisk on Derby.
So it's just sixty percent of-
Yeah.
Yeah, and see, I don't, I don't-
Yeah, they kinda box themselves in, I think, maybe by doing that.
Because again, if you just have a fifteen foot tall house,
Yeah.
it'd be hard to build a garage with a height of only nine feet.
Okay, well, we, I think that's enough unless anyone has any other comments. I think we'll, so-
Do we need to make a motion to table it?
Motion to table it, yes, just because it's been notified up, I wanna continue, so we don't have to re-notify everything.
I'll make a motion to table, um, the conversation about sidewall height requirements.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, what's next? Uh, discuss sign ordinance and murals. Who's leading this one? The new guy, Baron?
So, the previous meeting, you asked us to review the mural ordinance and, uh, kind of report back to you in regards to the murals. So, uh, also, this was in anticipation for some projects that were occurring in the city or anticipated to incur in the city. So, the purpose, reason why this is important is because it maintains the integrity of the city, such as environmental and aesthetic integrity. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
And, uh, it reduces hazards to the city as well. So there's two, two specific types of murals that we're, um, worked on during the past week, and that would be artistic and commercial. Difference being, uh, commercial would be things such as uses symbols or advertising or has, uh, text that covers the fifteen percent, I would believe, of the surface area of that mural. And then our artistic would be more so, um, just the opposite, doesn't contain any of that, any advert, advertising symbols. And, um, we worked on the scope and worked on how it, uh, its application. It generally would apply to any development and construction that occurs in, um, the city. And, uh, yeah, if you have any questions to, that you may, um, you're curious about or need answers to, I can run you through some specifics.
I have three, three, um, things.
Okay.
On page seventy?
Seventy. Okay.
On, uh, twelve point ten dash two B, on Spencer Road. Should not, should that not be C two and C three? Since we now have added C three in that area?
All the property located with the, so you said this is twelve point ten to B?
Yes.
Okay, on the property located within that content.
That's too far east from this location. And that would be all I three stuff that we've changed for the, all the, uh,
So this is just along Spencer only, not, not including out there.
Correct.
Very good.
Okay.
So we don't think they'll put a sign anyway, anywhere along there?
That if, if they were, I'm guessing they would get K dot signage and it would be south of Thirty-Sixth Street, which is then it's outside of our jurisdiction.
Very good, just wanna make sure.
Assuming, don't know that, that's-
Yeah, okay, so that, that, as long as that's just covering right along Spencer, not part of the industrial park.
Yep.
Okay. And then, uh, down at the bottom of that page on E, we've, we've done a couple of changes for interstate highway signs. What, what did we have before? And is this higher, is the fifty feet, is that appropriate, I guess is what I'm asking, in twenty twenty-five compared to what we did have?
The interstate highway signs, we don't control. That's all through the, that's the state. That's, uh, so there, if you wanted to go outside of that, like the QuickTrip one did, that was outside that area.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So was it, was it, wasn't it higher than fifty feet?
Yes, I think they went to, is it a hundred or not? I don't remember if it was a hundred or if it was ninety feet or something like that.
And wasn't the other one that we did at?
On the other side of the street was the same, yep.
They got a variance for those, right?
Question is, they had to come in front of us and ask us for a waiver for that. Should, should we, should we be changing it from fifty feet to something higher than that?
Okay, I follow.
That's my question.
Okay.
Just go ahead and do it now, rather than-
Right.
Has it always been fifty? Has that been, was that changed or is that the same as it's been?
That's the same as it's been.
So, I would ask this board if we'd like to-
Now, does that-
Change that from fifty to something else.
So along the highway, when the highways are raised highway, does that fluctuate fifty foot above the level of the concrete or fifty foot from the ground?
From the ground.
Okay, so when you do have a raised highway, maybe we should make the exception to raise the sign that much? More.
That were raised, almost the whole way there.
Okay.
What are we doing with this today, Baron? Are we, are we making changes to this today? Are we discussing today? What are we doing today?
From my understanding, it was review of the, the code, um, specifically looking at something else here. Yeah, last meeting, you asked to review the provisions pertaining to the murals. So we have the current sign ordinance here and the regulations to both murals and digital signs. Okay, request a dissection. So, yeah, this is just a discussion on the two types of signs. If you have any revisions or anything that you, your questions, that's what I was supposed to do, is answer them for you. I could add a few things, specifically private and public. I know you mentioned the highway, which would be a public road, right? The, when it, when it comes to murals on private land, typically, um, according to the constitution, you wouldn't be as least restrictive as possible in being, uh, because you don't wanna, what's the word I'm looking for, kind of overstep on the rights of contract. So, um, that's part of the ability to contract, inter-private contracts. And for public, I mean, this is a governing authority, so as long as the, uh, the regulations don't, you know, kind of overstep into First Amendment, uh, you know, regulating-
Baron, can I ask you a question? So where is the, are the requirements for the murals, the specifics? They're in the table, there's a definition for it, but I really didn't see a lot of other criteria unless it falls under other things. Maybe I missed it.
So the definitions would discuss what, um, how to classify, as you know, you know, classify what the type of mural it is.
Yeah.
But when we get to, uh, let's see, applications, let's see here, private signs. The question is, let's see here, would you repeat your question again?
Uh, just, so I, going through this, I saw there's a definition for artistic mural. And then it's in the table for where the usages are. Here if you need a special use permit, but I didn't really see any, a lot of information or requirements on murals or restrictions.
I'll go come through the application process. Uh, there is twelve, ten, three rules and regulations, but, um,
Well, maybe that's what's, what we have.
That's more-
Commercial mural, what page?
Let me see here.
Uh, sixty-five. Maybe it's under wall signs would be-
Advertising billboard.
Specifically on how big it can be.
Yeah, just like any restrictions or-
So-
Is it under wall signs?
Well, specifically, um, for commercial, I found where commercial is located is twelve eleven, but, um, your question, where is the wall signs, um, let me see. Took me a little bit flipping through the pages compared to just going through, yeah, wall signs, twelve eight six, wall signs were permitted by table nine. So, anything other than commercial would be artistic from what I understand. So wall signs would, would, would count, um, in that, uh, science standards. Monument signs.
Can't be the rules, though, because we've got murals a lot bigger than on walls today.
Maybe it just wasn't included. I mean, maybe we've thought about signs on this and we didn't, we just don't have the section for murals or something, maybe.
That's what I feel like.
It's, uh,
I have to-
If I had somebody coming in for a mural sign and it was on a wall, that's where I would treat it, on the wall.
On the wall.
Right.
Well, the ones we have today are way bigger than what this allows.
The one we're gonna have is the one that's gonna be like- Right, and that's, and that's where we're, it's, if that is a, a commercial mural, there are no regulations on it. And do we wanna have regulations? Because there's no size on it or anything like that.
For a commercial mural.
A commercial mural.
Will that be a commercial mural on this silo?
Explain to me the difference between a commercial, commercial mural-
It's hard to say.
And a mural that we have today on the side of like, couple of buildings that we have.
Is a commercial mural the one where the name of the company is into the sign, so we don't, like, it says fifteen per-
Yes, they Pepsi or Coke.
Miracle.
Oh, this is the Cosian discussion.
Yes.
And it, doesn't say here can't be larger than fifteen percent of the entire mural?
Correct.
Text.
So, yeah, we don't need to go three hundred, five hundred thousand in debt like they are up in Salina?
No.
Right, it could be that.
So is, are you asking us today, do we wanna create, do you, we think we should add that to this text?
Correct.
Yes.
I think it's a good idea.
I think, because it looks, it's, it seems like if we're saying where is it, it's not very clearly defined, and that leaves a lot of room.
Well, doesn't it say fifteen percent of the mural can, has to be smaller? The commercial says the, over here,
Just the definition?
This, fifteen percent of the entire mural can only be the commercial, the name of the company.
Where do you see that at?
It's, um,
Yeah.
In the definition.
In the definition.
In the definition.
Definition of-
Commercial mural.
Oh, that, clear the definition.
Yeah, it says fifteen percent, which means if you have a twenty by twenty, only a square footage fifteen percent, that can be the name of the company or a, a company or-
Correct.
So it says here, which lim, which does limit.
That could be pretty big. It could still be huge.
How many huge buildings do we have in Newton besides the side of the city building?
More than you think, if you drive down Main Street and see all the sides of buildings. And we're talking, it could be on the side, it could be on the front, it could be on the back.
Yeah, if it's approved, yeah.
It wouldn't have to be approved, right?
Other than if you're talking down Main Street, down the facade is probably not gonna apply with the HPC side of everything.
Well, all murals have to be approved, correct?
Yeah, twelve point four to two permit generally required.
There's some that are.
Yeah, right.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things here were confusing.
That's what I think, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
These are all really complicated, so I don't wanna, um, add more confusion. But when you're wearing your hat as Historic Preservation Commissioners, the mural aspect is gonna take a minor piece to the fact of it's painted brick already or not. Um, your, the first element in our Historic Preservation Guidelines is about the structural integrity of the building. So we generally do not encourage painting over brick, because it determined, it degrades that structural integrity of the brick and the mortar. If it's already painted, we don't really have a lot of design guidelines on murals about if you put it on the front of the building, on the side of the building, as long as it met these guidelines. So if you already had a fully- as long as it met these guidelines, so if you already had a fully painted building, which we do have some in town, I don't think that Historic Preservation Guidelines would keep somebody from painting the design on their building, which is in essence what a non-commercial mural is, it's a different colors of paint, if you're going to allow the chartreuse green paint or the magenta paint, there's not going to be a lot of difference when you get to that level, that would be a much more minor regulation. So I just wanted to put that out there, I think the other distinction is that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that in our current read of our code, we don't define exactly, if you wanna put a mur- mural up, these are the different types, it's not in one fell swoop. We just have, if you wanna come get a, if you want a sign permit, we take it and you determine administratively how it fits in the code, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's gonna be my next question, so if, if this commercial mural piece gets added on page forty nine, if that definition goes in there, you know, is it an audit, is staff the one determining whether it's fine or not only?
Yeah, but they could, uh, appeal, like they could.
Yeah.
Go, like if they wanted, if my decision, they wanted to go against it, they could come to you guys and say. But yeah, there's others that could make the decision if they don't like mine.
Are you the designated signed, signed administrator then?
Correct.
I figured that was, well, and.
I didn't think that, there used to be one on the side of.
Steph, Steph.
On Sal's building, right there on Broadway.
Well, my, one of my concerns that I didn't see covered anywhere was the maintenance of this and the, a lot of stuff's up to interpretation, it seems like, and.
It is, I wish there was an easier way to control the upkeep of all of them, cause we have some here in town that are.
Yeah.
Falling apart.
I do recall that.
It was a grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now the grant has gone, well.
Yeah, anything like that, there should be something to maintain it, you know, and to keep it looking good, and if it doesn't look good, there should be a mechanism to remove it at someone else's cost, you know?
We, we've talked about that previously, when we did some, I was not sure all who was here, but we did look through some sign stuff and some mural stuff when I first joined. And that was, like, how do we go about that, because then you have to enforce that and who's going to enforce it and the cost involved just to enforce it and.
When you have a signed administrator.
Ten years from now with all the silos that they're doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're cool right now.
Yeah, they are.
But.
But in ten, twenty years, you see what those look like.
Right.
You know, if they don't get repainted.
Yeah, cause I think our question was the one we have downtown here, it had already had some, paint that one that was done by a grant, what is that one? Kind of by the old Dillons?
Yeah.
And some group did get together and fixed it up a little bit, but that's the one that was really like, about five years after it was done, it was kinda starting to peel and.
Well, the big one, obviously the biggest one is that one right by the railroad tracks beside the, the old Dillons.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, yeah, yes, yeah, that's the one that really kind of was like, well, yeah, what do we do about maintenance? This is what we have, you came with your grant, you painted it, and now there's no fund to keep it up, but how do we enforce that?
So do we know what other cities' requirements are, hate going to that card again, but.
I, I have done a whole lot of research on this.
I just wondered if there's other cities that have requirements in place that.
Let's ask Salina.
Except for Salina.
I, we can definitely look more into that, but when I was, uh, working on the, and I have a hard time saying the name, I kinda butcher it, Ardent Mills?
Ardent, oh, Ardent, yeah.
Ah, cool, cool.
You got it.
When I was working on that, I did like at Lawrence, and they have a, uh, I guess it's a sub art committee that will necessarily, what they do is they appoint people to go around the city and keep up the murals or check to make sure they're in compliance, but compliance as in if they're, they're not fading or if someone put graffiti on it or things of that nature, so there is a, I guess a separate Overwatch, uh, committee or body of governance that, that does that. Um, but I did also wanna mention another thing for the commission, uh, another point for the commission to consider, there is a, uh, caveat or a, uh, there's a, yeah, I think, yeah, there's a caveat here too, um, for the different murals for commercial and artistic. Uh, artistic and temporary are not, are exempt from permit fees and, uh, commercial has to pay permit fees, what I, what I understand. So that's something, um, that I think maybe you all should consider, if you have any comment on that.
Could we gather information about the Lawrence, how that, did the city ask them or make them do that? With that committee that goes around looking and, and, and making sure those murals in Lawrence are of standard and are not chipping away and see how that came about, is that possible?
Yeah, we can look.
Cause maybe, maybe that caveat is in with any mural that goes in there that someone has to watch it for a number, number of years or period of time if this mural would be put in place, whether it be commercial or
Mm-hmm.
regular mural.
Yeah.
Just to see what, how Lawrence has attacked that.
Another community, of course, that's famous for their murals is Clay Center, they've got murals everywhere.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, check Clay Center as well, please.
There's a suppose, I'm, I'm assuming those are all artistic and not commercial, so. I, is there a difference between the two, do we, does this body think there's a difference between artistic mural and a, and a commercial mural, and should they have different rules and regs?
I think a commercial mural should have different regulations if they're required, if a business needs not to keep that up, and we should make that, put that into that commercial mural project, if they do that, because then it's a sign that that company who's paying for that should have to keep up or.
Yeah, it seems like both should, or all of them should.
Should be, but maybe different.
Maybe different.
Who takes care of that, yes.
Right.
That business that's on that wall, if that's your business and you're required to keep that mural up for city standards, or we have to develop standards or.
It seems like it's a big enough topic that it, I feel like our regulation should have, like we've got rip signs, wall signs, temporary signs, if there should be mural signs or murals or artistic murals or commercial murals, they ought to have its own category and not just a definition.
I kept reading through it, waiting for the next page to, yeah, it's like.
Waiting for that part, right. And it wasn't there, so I thought, so I thought maybe it was missing, maybe we only had part of it and that section was missing.
That's what I thought maybe too.
But, but maybe not, so maybe that's, that is the point, is we.
We, we just need to add it as part of.
Maybe define a little bit more in there.
That's what I was thinking, so then I thought, well, some of these other cities might have lived through this and they have the requ, some requirements set out that we could start looking at. Any other comments?
Well, just back to my interest in side highway, do we wanna have staff pull from Wichita and.
I'll do that.
Some I thirty five corridor towns, like McPherson, how big, how tall are they?
Yeah.
And let's, let's not have to have them come to us if.
Right.
If we think it's okay.
Park City's another one, because they got all the same kind of.
Exactly.
It's going right through.
And they're high too, they're up, they're up above.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think that's similar to the other discussion, if we're gonna keep hearing variance requests and then we think it's the right thing to do, well, let's.
Yeah.
Change.
I feel like we're just behind.
Yeah, let's fix it.
We're behind the time, you know, it's time to re-up it.
It's been a long time since people wanted to do stuff here. The other thing that rolls into on this same one is the digital signs, I know we've had these discussions as well in the past and it's been brought up. Is there a route you wanna take with this one, kinda like the murals and get?
Well, we have a section for digital signs.
We do, that's what I just turned to, if there's anything that. Have you heard any complaints since you made, uh, since you, they're required to turn those down at night and you haven't heard much complaint since that, I mean, there was a lot of people complaining before that, but once that went into the record before, I mean, I was here. I really heard that much discussion in the paper or anything like that, cause I think that pretty much controlled that, I can't sleep at night when
Yep.
those went down. Yeah, the school was the big one there that ended up changing it all, but.
That's what I was gonna ask, did you hear back from any of the residents that, once that thing went up at the high school?
After I called the school and they started dimming it, I haven't heard from the residents.
Okay.
That was a high school?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So the only thing I didn't see in the digital sign section that I had written down was a size requirement. Where, where's the size requirement for a digital sign?
There's, there's not one.
That seems a little open to me.
Okay.
That maybe there ought to be some sort of a size requirement of some kind.
Get you a Vegas sign, that's what we may end up with, yeah, we may end up.
And maybe make that proportional to the, the building size or the.
Sixty percent of it.
Well, I was thinking of downtown, cause I, I've actually heard of people downtown, I've heard some complaints that they thought that they couldn't have a digital sign. But then I got to thinking, well, there's a sign right there at Union State Bank, that's a, a digital sign. And, so then I thought, okay, so if somebody was gonna do that today, would that, would that fall under the wall sign section? Or would the size requirement be under the digital sign section? And the wall size section has a limitation on size.
If they were doing the bank, the bank one, it'd be the digital, because it's a digital sign, it's not a wall sign.
So, so I think we need to get some, definitely need to get some size requirements on a digital sign.
Was the church, was that a digital sign, church up on twelve, was it twelve street?
Yeah, twelve street that turned into a digital sign, yes.
I thought there was size.
That was like a four by five, it was pretty small.
Okay, there wasn't any size or.
We didn't limit it on that, that's the size they promised.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought there was a size requirement.
And, and the church on Trinity, that's a digital sign too.
Yeah.
First street two.
First street.
Yeah, they just got one, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I would definitely add some size requirements there, and I don't know what that is, but.
Right.
Again, more research for the city.
Got it.
Thanks, Justin.
Looks like they buy the Tropicana sign and bring it over here.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, you can end up with some, uh-huh.
Any other thoughts or comments for staff?
Uh, I would like to get some clarification, so you said you, you would like two definitions, one that goes into what commercial is, then commercial murals, and then one that goes into artistic, that we were saying. Not definitions, but sections, regulations.
Yeah.
I think one of the reasons why we kept it open is because generally, anything that's not artistic is going to be by default, would be commercial. And, um, the reason is that going into constitution and First Amendment, uh, murals would be a speech issue. So we are a little hesitant or careful on regulating murals as a speech, um, as constitutional issue, because it could be supposed to do it at the least restrictive means, so, um, start to kinda get into the weeds and we can, kinda tiptoe through it when we start to discuss how we are going to define or exclude what's gonna be artistic and what isn't, so that's why it's kind of very much open. The only thing that kind of hits it on the target, hits it on the, the head, is, uh, that if it's, has symbols or like the Nike, the Nike logo or John Deere logo, or if it, uh, covers more than like, what was it, texts fifteen percent of the, of the mural, then that is directly commercial versus, uh, artistic is, is anything that's expressive, as long as it's, um, what you can regulate is fighting words and obscenit, uh, obscenity, things of that nature, so that's why I point that out.
Yeah.
It kinda gets a little sticky, uh, with people coming up and challenging and, oh, you're violating my freedom of speech, you know, so.
I think, I think it's more about the size than it is what it is, or what it says, I should say.
It's the size and also the maintenance and the upkeep of it, it's not necessarily completely on the content of it, you know, so I think we're talking, uh, it just doesn't look like there's any parameters set for anything, uh, at least based on what I saw, so.
Yeah, we're looking at size, upkeep, basically, right?
Yeah.
This is another one that.
Yeah.
Affidavit of publication, so if we could table it, that way we can continue it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we table.
Is there a second?
Discussion on the sign ordinance and murals.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of tabling the sign ordinance and murals, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Baron.
Thank you.
Uh, any old business? Any new business? Cool, we're adjourned.
And you may not put a mural on the side of your building.